We advise that proper notice is being given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the following manner: Notice advertising the Burlington County Times and Camden Borough Post on January 16, 2018, and post it on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Mr. Catch?
Here. So we have some items on our action agenda before we get to our regular agenda. The first action item is Resolution 2018-57. This is a resolution introducing the calendar year 2018 municipal budget. We've all gone through it painstakingly. And everybody's aware of the ins and outs. Do we need to make any mention? Can we just get a motion to approve this resolution?
I can give a brief synopsis of the budget. It's a total budget of $17,500,000. It is $1,016,483 under the municipal spending cap. $625,364 under the 2% levy cap. It increases the tax rate by one penny from 76.1 cents to 77.1 cents. It utilizes $3,748,000 of surplus to balance the budget. The largest area of increase in the budget is debt service, which goes up about $507,000, and that makes up 85% of the total increase. The budget will have a public hearing on April 10. It will be in the Burlington Times, advertising the Burlington Times on March 28. And in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a PowerPoint on the website. The budget will be on the website, and the user-friendly budget will also be on the budget website for people to review. And the public hearing on it will be April 10.
Thanks, Jeff. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2018-58. This is a resolution approving a totally disabled veteran exemption for Block 3, Lot 8.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2018-59. This is a resolution endorsing application for the 2017 recycling tonnage grant.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2018-60. This is a resolution refunding municipal fees for construction permit listed in the amount of $387.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2018-61. This is a resolution approving the Rappel License Number 541 and 542 for the Delran Middle/High School PTF.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2018-62. This is a resolution authorizing engineering for the 2018 road program in the amount not to exceed $228,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. Finally, Resolution 2018-63. This is authorizing the executive session to discuss the following. Actually, it's three items. The personnel issue regarding the sewer superintendent, litigation update regarding the fair share housing versus Delran Township, and in addition is litigation on 219 Rose Bay Court.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloughte?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye. At this time, we have guests in the room. Our speaker representing Habitat from Humanity is their CEO, is Lori Leonard. And Lori has had the opportunity to speak with some of the folks, but now has come to our work session to explain to everyone so that we have an opportunity to hear what they do for the citizens of Delran. Lori, Lori's yours.
Thank you. I'm going to stand over here if that's okay. So I am the CEO of Habitat for Humanity. We were established in 1987 Burlington County, and it was in January 2017 that we merged with Trenton. Merged is a nice way to put it. We basically took them over. And we are now Habitat for Humanity Burlington County in Greater Trenton, Princeton. So we have a really big service area Burlington County and Mercer County. And we have been working with municipalities since we started. We have built over 140 homes, so we have experience. And we partner with municipalities to either build homes or renovate existing homes. We help them meet their affordable housing obligations in the process. So currently, we, well, in the past, we have worked on homes and completed homes in Mount Laurel, Mount Holly, Palmyra, Moorestown, Riverside, Burlington City, Burlington Township, Beverly, Willingboro, Borden Town, Medford, and Cinnaminsin. And we're currently working on homes in Yvcham, Palmyra, Springfield Township, Burlington Township, Haynesport, Cinnaminsin, Trenton, Ewing, and Princeton. So I brought you some pictures of homes. So this is a home in Cinnaminsin, my personal favorite design home. It's a Cape Cod three-bedroom in Cinnaminsin. That was closed on. Sure. This is a home that we just completed last year in Palmyra. And Palmyra Township was so happy with how we worked with the town that they just donated a piece of land where we're building two homes for veterans initially, hopefully. And after six months, can't find any veterans because they're not as easy to find as we thought, we will be opening up to the public for, just for the general population to qualify for. So there's a family living in there currently. And this was a duplex that we built in Mount Holly in the historic. That was really fun. Party siding and everything else that goes along with historic preservation. But it turned out to be a really nice duplex. And then currently, on a site in Yvcham, we're building our first house, working with the municipality, building sick build, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home on a beautiful lot that backs to the park, Savage Field. And we had, recently had a big charity build. A bunch of corporations came out and they helped build walls for this property. And we raised some money. It was really fun. The township was involved. So this is currently going on. I think there's windows and doors in it now or waiting on the roof.
And they, did you buy the land or they donated?
We bought the land. Initially, we bought that land, and then Yvcham Township has brought us in and said, "We have a plot of land that we want to work with you to build eight units on." So, because they were really happy with our program, so they want to bring us in to help them with their affordable housing. This is Burlington Township, and this house is gorgeous. I live in this house. We're renovating this house. We got it through the Home Path Program. We purchased it, and we're working to renovate the interior of it. This will be a beautiful house.
So that's what I was going to ask. So you're doing renovations as well as new construction?
Yes. We're also, this is a really bad picture, but we are working with Princeton to do a duplex. And this is just kind of to show you that we try and design our houses to fit in with the community. So we're not going to plop, you know, a rancher in a community where there's historic Victorian style homes. So we're building a duplex in Princeton. They are donating the land to us. They paid, they used their Affordable Trust Fund money and they bought the land for $500,000. There, they donated to us, and they, I think the lot is 90 by 30 or something. I mean, it's an incredibly small lot, and they said we want two units. So we worked with our architect, and he came up with a beautiful plan, and everybody's so happy about it. So that, we break ground in June. And we're this family. And then as a result of the merger with Trenton, they were not completing the work that they had. They started a seven-unit townhome project, and they basically only framed it. So we have gone in, this is the back of it, the front is all brick. We are finishing up this seven-unit townhome, and we are closing in.
Do you do landscaping as well, like do grass and shrubs? Okay. So you do.
And then, before I have Ashley tell you about the families, how we qualify them, all of our houses are built by volunteers. We do have two, four, four people on construction. And we sub out the trade and the mechanicals, but the rest of our properties, houses, homes are renovated or built with volunteers. So we always have volunteers out on site, and these are, this was the Burlington County Chamber of Commerce. They come in, they came out. I was there that day. We poured cement, and it was so fun. Just like playing in the mud.
I've never heard poured cement. It was so much fun.
It really was. We had the big yellow boots on. This was Keller Williams came out and they did a team Habitat. It's great for the town because people from all different companies come from all around Burlington County, and they come into your town, and they have fun, and they build, and they get to, you could come out on the site and work with them.
And just for clarification, she said Team Habitat. Team Habitats are corporate-sponsored days, so the corporation actually pays for their, to send their employees out to volunteer for the day.
And then my final picture is, you know, this is a dedication in Burlington Township. The mayor, we do a big dedication, the mayor comes out, and he hands the keys over to the family, welcomes them to the neighborhood, and it's such a nice event, and everybody feels welcome, usually get press, and it's just, it's positive all around. So Ashley's just going to tell you a little bit about how we qualify the families. Ashley Brink, she's the Director of Families at Homeowner Services.
Hi. So, yeah, so I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the criteria. So we obviously don't accept just anyone. Our families have to meet three basic criteria. They have to have a need for our housing program. So ultimately, it means they couldn't walk into a TD Bank and get approved for a $200,000 loan. And typically, it's because their income is too low. The need also is overcrowded. So we have a lot of families that come in and apply. They're sleeping on the couch while their two kids share the one-bedroom that's in their one-bedroom apartment. We also have unaffordable, you know, we have people coming in making $25,000 a year and paying $1,400 on their apartment. And, you know, so half of their, more than half of their income is going towards housing alone. So that's not including groceries, gas, you know, education, whatever they have to pay for. They also have to have the ability to pay, so that's the second criterion. So we do check into credit. We do look at the credit history. We have a minimum credit score requirement of 550 altogether, you know, after we pulled from the three credit bureaus. So we look at their credit report, we look at their repayment history, we also look at their income. So we go by the HUD income guidelines. And typically, we serve 30% to 60% of the area median income. In some locations, such as Princeton, I actually think we're required by the funding that we're getting to go up to 80% of the area median income. We are allowed to do that. We also go up to 80% of the area median income for our veterans builds. We are qualified loan originators, so Habitat does extend a 0% interest mortgage loan to our homebuyers. So we, myself and another staff member, are qualified loan originators. We have to do federal training. We do have a state exemption, so we don't have to comply with the State Act, if anyone's familiar with that, because we're a nonprofit lender. So we did get an exemption from the state, but we do still have to meet the federal guidelines as a loan originator. We also have a criterion called willingness to partner. So our families come out, and they actually are required by the program, before they close, they have to complete up to 400 hours of what we call sweat equity. It is volunteer work, basically. They come out, they help build their own home, they help build houses of other families in the program. They're also required, and I love, I love this part of our program, we just got to talk about it, they're required to take education classes. So like, I made a joke yesterday, I did, I did a presentation of Palmyra Improvement Association yesterday, and I was like, when I purchased my house, if it wasn't for my fiance, I would be clueless. Like, the heater goes off, I'm like, what do we do? I have no idea. And so you really, really, I mean, we need education to be homeowners. You need to know to save, you know, have an emergency fund for when your dishwasher breaks, because there's not going to be a landlord anymore to reach out to, you know, to come fix it. So we train our homebuyers. They have to take a nine-week finance and budgeting course. We use Financial Peace University. Is anyone familiar with that? No? It's a great program, right? So, so we use Financial Peace University for nine weeks. They have to undergo a credit seminar, an insurance seminar, a pre-closing orientation, and basically other things that come up. We, you know, we always offer it to them. We say, hey, you know, do you mind going to this? And typically, they're like, yeah, absolutely. We got sweat equity hours for it, and we learn stuff. We also, something that I wanted to talk to you, and that it can kind of go into, I guess, you know, our partnership with municipalities. A lot of people get a little nervous about affordable homeownership, because they always say that it brings down property values. We at Habitat, it is our policy to actually sell the houses at fair market value. So houses are not sold at their mortgage amount. They're not sold for what they can afford. They're sold at fair market value, and then we extend a first mortgage based on the family's income. Okay? And what we do is we subsidize the difference in the terms of like a silent second mortgage that's only payable upon default. Okay? So it actually, it increases property values. It basically is treated the exact same as any other property.
Ashley, can you just, I was going to do this part of the center up. Can you just talk about how you work with families with the foreclosure prevention process?
Oh, yeah. So, so the last thing, it was probably like every other lender, but I think that we're special in the fact that we really know our families. We, the last thing we want to do is foreclose on someone. And so, you know, we do foreclosure prevention, I would say, pre-closing, because the finance and budgeting course, so we teach families to save for emergencies. So if you do lose your job, you have an emergency fund to kind of carry you over until you get, you know, employed again. But we also have really, really worked hard to establish basically a delinquency procedure. So when a family comes and they say, hey, we lost our job, or there was a death in the family, or, you know, something happened, they can't make that mortgage payment anymore, we have so many options for that family. We have something called a pronto agreement, which is basically, they agree to pay us whatever they can afford, be it $20 a month. They can pay us $20 a month, and if they make that payment every single month for six months or 12 months, we'll restructure their loan. You know, because they've showed us that, you know, we can trust them, that they have the commitment, you know, to continue forward. We partner with agencies like Clarify Credit Counseling, so if something does happen, you know, with their credit, they have other debt obligations, or maybe bankruptcy might be their best option, we kind of steer them over to Clarify Credit Counseling. We have forbearance agreements that we have, so we're like, you know, listen, sometimes we're like, don't pay your, don't pay your mortgage for six months. You know, get, get back on your feet, you know, figure things out, and then come back to us, and then you'll, you know, you'll owe us or whatever. Are there any other ones that I'm thinking that I may have missed?
Is there any age restrictions?
On the properties, no. Not at all.
And what about, are you guys HUD subsidized? Do you get subsidies from HUD?
Do we get, we get some funding through Burlington County through the home funds?
Yeah.
Which I think, not directly from HUD, no.
What's your success rate with, you know, for people not foreclosing and actually staying in their homes and keeping their homes long-term?
Yeah, so because of the merger, our delinquency rate did increase. Trenton had a lot, Trenton had a lot of delinquencies, and they weren't dealing with them. People were just not paying their mortgage, and they weren't doing anything about it. So then we came in, and we're now working to restructure those loans. I, the last time John and I actually spoke, it was about 25%. That's with, with the Trenton.
So without Trenton, you were even better?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. And again, you know, that's not our foreclosure rate. So our foreclosure rate, I've been there, what, six and a half years? I think we foreclosed our two properties. Yeah. So, again.
And when we foreclose on a property, it's, you know, usually a family will come in, either they won't respond to us, to our offers of assistance, or they come in and they say, oh, well, too bad, we have a $700 a month car payment, and we're paying that car, we're not paying you anything for your mort, for the mortgage. Those are the times that we foreclose. If somebody comes in and they really have legitimate reasons why they can't pay, we will work with them.
Yeah.
But we're also not going to enable them either.
Yes.
Because that takes money out of the pocket for us to be able to build additional homes for families.
And we explain that to families. You know, it's the Fund for Humanity. We explain, your mortgage payment is literally, it's being cycled into this Fund for Humanity. It's literally helping another person who is in your position. So I think, I think it really resonates with the families. The families typically come back and they'll volunteer with us after closing. So we definitely, partnership is like a huge key word for us. So we definitely, we have this partnership with our families, you know, they, they become a part of our Habitat family, and so I think they're almost afraid to let us down.
Now, do you have a waiting list of people?
We don't have a waiting list per se. We do have, what your people are probably talking about is our interest list. So every single time we get a phone call into our offices, we add them to something called our interest list, so that we have all of their contact information. So when we know that we're going to start marketing for specific properties, that entire list is notified. In addition to like our.
And then, no, one other question with that is, is there like a priority in the sense of veterans over anybody?
Yeah, we do have veterans priority, but that's it.
And that's correct.
Yeah, there are really no other priority schemes. Yeah, and then like if we have multiple people going by, or applying for one property, we are, we do a lottery.
And what, what do you expect from the township? Like what, what will we as a township have to do to partner with you?
So many of the townships that we work with initially, they just partner with us, and then they get an idea of, you know, what a good partnership it is, and then they'll talk to us about, Burlington Township did it right off the bat. They said, if you partner with us, we don't have a land to give you, we don't have property to give you, but we will give you money out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to subsidize your program, you know, that specific property. And then in exchange, we give them, we put a 30-year deed restriction on the property. And I would say 90% of the townships that we work with either have donated the land, given us a foreclosed house, or have contributed some funding towards subsidizing, you know, the expenses of the property.
Of renovating the property?
Right.
And then on kind of a different note, you know, say, say we've already done that, say we have a property here, we always like to reach out to the township for marketing purposes. You know, you know your, the people who are in your town, we might not. So, you know, any kind of newsletter database that you have, you know, share it with us or send our information out to those families, you know, really help us identify who in your township potentially needs, needs our housing program.
Lori, if you would, you mentioned a 30-year deed restriction. Tell us a little bit more about, A, what that restriction entails, and how you can help us with affordable housing units.
Well, basically, the deed restriction is what COA, if it still exists, requires. So it just means that they have to stay in the house, and if they want to sell it, they have to sell it to another income-qualified family. And that's basically what it is. We have our own criteria affiliated with, you know, what they can and can't do to the house. They can't put an addition on, they can't put a pool in, they can't do anything that's going to make it, have it become unaffordable in the, you know, in the marketplace. But we work with the administrative housing agent if the family wants to sell, but most of our families stay in the houses. So that's what, that's the 30-year deed restriction. They sign it when we go to closing, and it's attached to the house, and.
They also, they have to use it as their primary residence, which I think is really important. We just merged with Trenton, and I noticed Trenton, a lot of homeowners in Trenton will purchase the properties and then immediately kind of use it as an income property, so they'll just start renting it out, which is not what we want to see. So we have a restriction that it has to be their primary residence, they cannot use it, you know, as an income-based property.
Would we rehab a townhome?
Can we rehab a townhome?
Like a, an individual single-family home? Yeah, like, you know, a group of homes, if there's a couple in there that we had that were in bad shape.
If it was a section, we would go in and do that. We renovated a townhome in Burlington City that was in the middle, and it was really difficult to do that. I mean, it basically collapsed inside of itself, and we had to rebuild it. That's difficult. But if you donated a block, we would go in and rehab the whole thing.
How about if the exterior was in good shape, and it was the interior that just needed to be done?
We love that. The exterior is way easier, the interior is way easier to renovate than the exterior.
Well, I remember when we had our initial meeting, you said if the townhomes have homeowner associations here, you hesitate with that? Is that true? Is that still?
It's a bit.
Yeah. It is tough for us with HOAs.
It goes into the affordability for the family. So, I mean, I know, like, I live in Palmyra Harbor, my HOA is like $200 and some dollars a month, so it's, you know, it's just an extra $200 a month that we, we have to make sure that the qualifying family can actually afford, so it gets a little hard.
But would there ever be a possibility of?
I think there's, I mean, there's always a possibility. Where, the townhouse that we're building in Princeton, it's going to need to have a very limited HOA, and the municipality, their affordable housing organization, I forget what they call it, they're, they're doing it. So we're, it's probably going to be 30 hours a month, and the Princeton Affordable Housing Agency will handle that HOA, the oversight of it. $30 a month is reasonable. In perpetuity, it will be, too. So I think there's ways to do it, especially if it's not just a one-off, if it's a block of them, we can talk about and figure it out, but it just can't be cost prohibitive for the family, because taxes in New Jersey are high. You know, a lot of the times, if a family gets an 800, has an $800 payment a month, we get 200 of it. The principal is spread out over 30 years. So we're, you know, we're putting money out to build these houses, and then when we go to closing, because we hold the mortgage, we get the first month's principal. That's what we get. So we don't really get any, you know, money back to put it into other homes. So we want to try and get as much, much principal as possible. So it depends. If there's a way to figure out and make it work, I never say never. I can't say I don't like it, but I'll never say never.
Any, any other questions from council?
I will make one comment, though. I was intrigued by your saying, I, my experience with Habitat for Humanity was that you just rehab the homes and put people in those homes. You actually stay with them after that, to make sure that they're able to stay. It's very interesting. Thanks.
Yeah, Ashley just had a meeting today with a family that moved into Willingboro a few years ago, and they were having trouble with their taxes. And they came in and had a meeting with Ashley to try and figure out how to work with this glitch in the tax system. So, and we just had homeowners in Cinnaminsin that just got notified that they're now in the flood zone. They weren't before, but now they are. So they're going to probably have to pay $200 a month for flood insurance. So we're working with them to figure out a way that they can still have an affordable mortgage.
And that's another example, we might actually have to restructure their loan to no fault of their own. You know, they're paying their mortgage every month, they're not at all delinquent, but now this, this kind of huge expense has been dropped on them. And we don't buy, we don't buy properties or accept properties in flood zones when, at closing, they were not in a flood zone. And, you know, that flood service said they were good to go for the life of the loan, and I don't know what happened, but it's been my discretion.
But we would really, I mean, Delran's always been on our radar as, you know, municipality where we'd really like to work. Families like this town, you know, they mention it a lot, are going to build in Delran. They like Medford and Delran for some reason.[1661.92] And so it would be, yeah, it would be cool to build here and, and partner with, with the town and the council if it, if it works. It would be great, and we really like it.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you for coming out.
Thanks.
Yeah.
We, so the next episode, we'll do some homework from our end.
Okay.
If there's anything additional you'd like to provide, if there's any reference material, feel free to do that.
I think, did I, I gave Pat some letters from other townships, from their mayors, actually, just testimonials of.
Well, I think you really are.
I think we can see that already.
But I, I think you can see by the pictures that the houses that we build are not, you know, they're, they're nice houses. We wanna build houses that people, they're buying them, so we want them to be nice houses. I think the perception a lot of times is, oh, there's the Habitat House. You're not gonna know what the Habitat House is.
You're helping people through.
Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful program, like best foresight, like the, to see from beginning to end, I love it. I think it's really great, people are lucky.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time, thank you so much.
Yes.
We can, we can talk about that more in a second.
Oh, okay.
So, uh.
But just, it's a good program.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the on point. Brian will be updating us in close. So, coincidentally, next is a request for hardship waiver. The, as you know, we've had several of these along the way. And in reading the material, it's, it's, excuse me, it's a shame that, that it happens like this, but let me just ask a question. I think that I ask every time we have one of these, and that is, we don't lose the affordable.
It does not affect our credit.
Right, okay, and, and I don't know how that's done, but I, I'm glad that that's done.
It eases their marketing requirements, they still have to abide by the deed, they still have to abide by the maximum resale price. It just allows them to expand who is eligible to purchase a home, and they can't find somebody.
So, so Jeff, maybe this is a question for you. When, when we do this, and we've done this every time in the past, and I'm sure we'll continue to do that, do we get any kind of notice that it has sold at market value? Or any part, I realize I'm catching you unprepared, but.
I, I know I don't see one.
Right.
No, we don't, I mean, we could, we might see some that come through, but we'd have to check with it, with the deed like any other property, but no, we're not notified in, in any particular manner.
Just curious to know if, if us giving these waivers helps, you know, or what the issue is. And, you know, we've seen a number of these go by, just wondering, you know.
They're normally requested when a given amount of time has expired and the owner of the home hasn't been able to find an eligible person, purchaser. So it really just expands what those eligibility guidelines are to get them a little bit more underway in finding a income served by an individual.
Okay. This, this individual's actually contacted me to find out if the township was interested in buying. No, thank you.
We're not, we're not the real estate business.
So, I mean, are we doing this tonight, or do we need to put this upon a meeting?
This is, this is just for you to confirm that you've seen that really, the, the only action you can take is if you decide you're gonna buy it. Otherwise, there's no action to take.
So they're submitting a request for a waiver, do we have to grant that waiver, or is there something that we have to decide?
The township just has to approve that. I can talk to the HMFA and make sure that that gets related up as long as that's, there's.
So I think the question that I'm trying to ask is how do we approve that?
We could do it by resolution?
Okay, that would be the next meeting.
But what this is, this is just asking whether we want to buy it, correct? Right on here.
It's normally just on a buy motion.
That's just.
We can do it that way as well.
We're interested in buying, so I just.
Oh, well, that's, that's separate. That's separate. So. Right, so.
Yeah, that's all we've got.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion that Brian is gonna craft for us on the spot. So I'd like. So I'd, I'd like a motion granting the hardship waiver to one seventy-six Natalie Row Delran.
So.
I'd say. Need a voice vote?
Um, yes.
Voice vote's okay?
Well, we can just do a voice vote and say.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries. Congratulations to one seventy-six Natalie, good luck. Okay. Hopefully everyone's read the complaint regarding Echo Court.
I thought it was being granted.
Granted.
You guys done? You guys done?
Yeah, we're done.
So Echo Court's having a problem with parking. I don't know, Jeff, has anyone had a chance to reach out to the school?
Yeah, the, I, actually, I thought the chief was gonna be here, I'm, I'm not sure we should really go too far into depth without him, but he has tough space with the school, and the superintendent has brought back the issue of the request that, about perhaps putting no parking up on Conroe, because that's, are providing the parking areas and no parking areas on Conroe, because that's what they claim, you know, there aren't enough parking to go around, and that's why these people are not in this direction.
So is it, is it, would it not be? We put no parking on Conroe and no parking on Echo, is that what, is that what you said?
No, again, I think you need the chief here to explain the whole thing, but there is not enough parking on Conroe, and it gets overcrowded, and this issue has resulted in parking taking place on Echo. So you have that issue. Then there's another question that comes up about parking during certain times on Conroe that kind of gets lumped into the issue.
Right, so.
But first of all, there's not enough parking at the school.
Right, I mean, that's really the issue.
Is the school looking to expand their parking line?
I think they're expanding as much as they can, or something.
Or that they intend to do.
But they're, what they're talking, they're really old behind it, so they're looking into doing it for a hundred, or a hundred thousand.
That's very far down the road. Sure, they've always done more than that, than more.
Right, but anyhow, get back to what Jeff said.
I mean, if you're at the table and you have the chief here to hand above the issues, I think that makes sense. There's no reason that he wanted you, and then actually did next.
I, I, I thought the chief was gonna be here as well.
Yeah.
Thank you for the pictures.
Yeah, I, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure you're aware of it, because the residents brought it to our attention, and they asked the chief to take a look at it, come up with some options, and he didn't reach out to the superintendent, so at the next meeting, I'll ask him to come up with some options, if you don't mind.
For both issues?
You know, I drove down Conroe today, we were driving on the clock, and the traffic, it's, it's dangerous with the school, and then when they park at that field, it's, it's insane.
Okay, there it is. Now go ahead in here. All right, so, um, next item on the agenda is the distracted driving grant. This, these are county grants we get, where they cover a portion of the, of the overtime for the police. We've used them in the past. And we're just making up the difference, it looks like it's approximated at about twenty-six dollars and seventy cents an hour is the difference between what the grant would pay and what we would ultimately pay, depending, give or take, on who the officer was that was filling the spot. Did I get that, did I get that all?
Yes.
So, this is, this is just agreeing to apply for the grant?
We have the grant.
So this is accepting the grant. So I will, I will ask, is there anyone who has any objection to accept, to accepting this grant?
We've done this in the past.
Do we do anything officially?
We've done this in the past.
Yeah, yes.
A while, a while back, council had indicated that, that they didn't wanna do all the grants, and that they wanted, especially the ones that were cut off at a certain dollar now, that they wanted us to bring. So when the grant comes available, it doesn't cover the whole cost of it, we bring it to you for your approval.
Do we get a report from the, from what the grant has done in terms of enforcement?
We, we can, I mean, they have to provide something back to the provider of the grant, it certainly can't be on it.
I mean, I appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, do we do anything officially in order to, in order to accept the grant? A motion, a motion?
Yeah, I had a report last year, that's what we did.
Okay, so can I have a motion accepting the distracted driving grant as discussed?
So.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Tyler.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need to, can we make an admission to this while we go to executive session? Is it too late to do that, like to do a new resolution in order to do that? I just remembered that I, I had an update regarding the shared service from the schools.
We can walk on a new resolution, that might be the easiest way, when we clean this.
Okay, can, can we do that now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just gonna ask for a resolution authorizing a fourth item in executive session, and that would be just an update from the, from the superintendent regarding the school's shared services. I guess that would, would that be in addition to two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three, or would that be two thousand eighteen dash sixty-four? Would we be?
I think.
Okay, so that would be resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixty-four.
Jerry, to, to that point, do we need to say something about the Roseberry Court, 'cause mine doesn't say that was included in executive.
Yeah, I, I did say that.
I know you added it on, but that's okay, just won't.
No, that was, that was okay in the original resolution. This would be a second resolution, two thousand eighteen dash sixty-four, that would add an update on the school board's response to our initial offer for the shared service.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do, do we need a roll call for this? We probably do. We did for the other one.
Mr. Barrow.
Aye.
Mrs. Clay.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
Aye. Okay, so nothing left, what, on the closed session, so we'll get our reports. Jerry is here tonight. Jerry, you been doing anything, or you just been hanging out in the chat?
Hanging out.
All right.
The Con, we, as you know, we're gonna, we're putting together funding and all for the Conroe, Conroe project, for getting new equipment put in out there and everything. It's, it's gonna take months for everything to come together, but when it does come together, there's a, a removal fee to have the equipment removed, and it's like eighteen thousand dollars to have it removed. I don't have the manpower all the time to remove it, that's a contractor coming in, taking it out, and he's charging us eighteen thousand dollars. There is another option where there's govdeals.com, where we can put it on govdeals.com, maybe recoup some money and have somebody pay for it, as long as they follow the guidelines that I provided to them, where they would come out and remove it by a certain time and a certain manner, so that it's put back to, so that we can, we put the new, new stuff in there. So what I'm reaching out to these guys for is when that all comes, and it all, it all seems like it's coming together, do you think it would be okay if I just, I, I put this stuff on govdeals.com and try it?
Second option, yeah.
Before we have to tell you.
Doesn't hurt, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, even if they take it out for free and.
Exactly. The equipment.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Before we do that, though, we're gonna wanna do a resolution to, for.
I mean, I had made mention of it in my report to you guys, that that would be one of the options that we would try first. There was a second option in that, but I can start getting pictures taken and things.
Let me, let me ask you if there's a middle option for you, the, the third option, the second option. Would there be an option to sell the metal for scrap?
It's not metal, it's mostly all plastic, and, you know.
I thought some was metal, okay.
There's not eighteen thousand dollars worth of.
No, I got you, I'm just saying, even down or down, and maybe somebody take it metal for, if we, if that's.
Jerry, and when did you say would be, the new stuff would be in?
Uh, we're still working on, you know, we were hoping to have something started in the spring of this year, but it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. So we'll probably see if we can maybe put something together late fall, and hopefully we'll get it in early winter, 'cause we gotta make sure we can dig, but we don't wanna shut the park down for the summer, so, you know, there's a lot of things that gotta come together.
No, I understand, just wondering.
Um, that's all, yeah.
Like, even though we're not in reports, I think everyone, once again, like, thank you, your staff, for a great job with, with an unusual snowfall, that kinda way to get away, and then just dumped it all at once. And I'm not sure how you do this, but the moment that my, the people that snow blow my house, as they were driving away, the plow came by, so it was very nice.
It's all. We're gonna group the guys, yeah, we're all, guys. And you know, and if I could say something, I mean, if, when these guys are talking to residents and stuff and all, and I try to explain, and they, they just don't get it, that, you know, you found my driveway, and I went to bed, it was open. When the snow stops, we need four to five hours to go through the whole town and push your curb to curb. If they just wait the four to five hours, we won't come back and close no driveways after that. After that, we're all just doing maintenance work or whatever. But for four to five hours afterwards, we'll down everybody driveway, no matter what, that's what we're doing.
And you know, and you know, you saw me and my wife doing it four times, and I tried to explain that to my wife, she didn't care, so. But anyhow, I wanna say one other thing. As far as, I wanna get to the branches bit, 'cause there is a lot of branches all over the place. I did speak with Jeff. As soon as you can get onto the branches, we appreciate it, overtime, Jeff had asked me, I'm fine with it. I don't know if that has to go to council, but, I mean, there's a lot of branches, and I think.
We started today, and, and I'm gonna say, we, we put together a, you know, I thought about it, we were gonna send out two or three chippers, and then last night I'm sitting there thinking, the, the new trucks that we got, the new, the new beef trucks that we got, when we purchased them, you know, the backs come off of them, the beef pickers come off, and so when we purchased them, we purchased them with twenty yard dumpsters, so now we took the backs off and we got these twenty yard dumpsters. So last night I'm thinking like, wow, I didn't even realize that we had these, that now we're out there with the front end loaders, and we're grabbing the whole piles and we're putting it right in the dumpsters, so it's like, it, it's going, and I got, it's going a lot quicker. And we probably got it about ten days right now, when it's, it's like dead right now, because I can't get on the fields 'cause they're soaking wet, even though the baseball bats are screaming already. And as long as I don't get no snow and the weather holds out, we'll get a good twelve to fourteen days where these guys will work overtime, and we'll get up and charging these branches.
And Jerry, the, the houses, the streets that you did, I mean, I saw them and this morning, I heard them and then watched them. They are, not only did they pick up, they clean up afterwards, they're, they're phenomenal, like, our whole, they went through our, you know, our neighbors, they did a phenomenal job, and I, I, you know, I'm gonna go talk to the one resident that you cleaned up the whole yard for, just to let they know that you guys did that, 'cause they were not home. But it, it was really, the street was like night and day after, they, they were great.
Just so you know the way it works, 'cause I know, and I get this call a lot, you know, how come the river there, we're not over here, or whatever. We were chipping as we go through, and that's where we left off last, and that's where we picked up. Now I put all the crews together as like a bunch of ants running through the town, because I was afraid that if I put a crew over here, and a crew over there, and a crew over here, and then I have pool crew, and this lady, they called from down here and said, well, why, why did they get a crew, and why did you pull my crew, or whatever? This way, we're all working together to work through the town, so it's, it'll work, I think it works the best.
Really, really, looks great.
Maybe we should though, just put it on the site somewhere that we're working.
Jamie, do you have, it's already been off.
Okay, good.
So I think we need to make a concerted effort, anyone who's on Facebook, to let people know that their branch is on the curve as they always are instructed to do, but do it ASAP, because you're coming through, and we only, it's only gonna be a one time through.
It won't be until October, but this, this, a whole bunch of.
But for this, for this, to get that, don't wait around. I have neighbors asking me already, when are they gonna come by, and I said, let me find out, you'll see when I put find out, and that'll be tomorrow. Great, thanks very much. Jamie, anything for us? Jeff, anything for us?
Um, two things. Number one is that the sewer bills will be going out this week, just so you know. Secondly, I thought I heard you mention, and because I got that email too, Jake's Place, Gaila, you talked to council about that issue.
I, I, I'm gonna talk about it in my report, but let me talk about that in the report.
Okay, and also, at some point, are we gonna talk about a round of, start running, 'cause I keep getting emails about, okay. That's all I have.
I was gonna say, um, there's two, two active, like, construction projects we're writing to advertise. One's the Pheasant Road Marion Drive project, which was funded by CDBG. Those planned inspections are done, and we're approved by CDBG to advertise, as well as the Route one thirty Southbound Phase Two Sidewalk project. We were told that our DOT permit's in, it's in the mail, and we're, should, once we receive that, we should be ready to advertise that. So the council's okay, once, you know, everything's in place, and I review with Jeff, you know, the final thoughts of the project, the estimates, and he's okay with it, the budgeting, I wanna advertise it, both of them, so we can get them started. So I just need, usually we'd like to get councils okay at that point.
Okay.
Other than that, you know, thank you for the authorization tonight for the, the road projects, and we'd be looking to get those advertised by the end of May.
Okay, so let me just ask one question on your report, your, your engineering update. The roof bids, we received the bids, I thought we gave, did we not give our approval?
You, you awarded them last Tuesday, I wasn't sure when I wrote that.
Okay, all right, I just, I thought we awarded them.
You did.
And then I read this, and I thought, okay, maybe I'm just having a senior moment. Okay, good, good, thank you. Brian, anything for us?
Nothing for me.
Okay, so we'll go around the, the horn. Mister Best Dress Tonight.
I love your tie.
Well, I don't know, you and Brian are right up there, but the tie really puts it in the top.
Yeah, I like that.
Apologies for getting here right at the last minute, I was attending a viewing for State Senator Sweeney's father down in Cherry Hill. And I was gonna have to make it back here as quick as I do. Nothing else, thank you.
Tyler, anything for us this evening?
Okay, thank you.
Patty, anything tonight? Okay, so, so really, I, I only have the two items from my report. One is, we talked briefly about Jake's Place, they're offering, as they often do, four tickets to mayor and council. Ken has indicated he's not able to attend, Tyler has it on his schedule, I think that means he's going to attend, and I'm not sure if that's with a plus one. Patty is not able to attend, Dan, are you going to attend?
I'll go, yes.
Okay, so, and I'm planning to attend, and I, I'm not sure if I'm gonna have a plus one either. But what I will do, and I did ask my company to make a donation, I'm not sure if that comes with tickets or not, but either way, it looks like there're gonna be three or potentially six of us there, is that accurate? Are you gonna have a, are you gonna be a plus one?
No, I'll be solo.
Okay. Tyler, you?
I'll be solo.
Well, then I guess I'm gonna be too. Well, we'll see, we definitely wanna give the missus the opportunity if she wants to, but she might be. So they're also asking about, because they're up over. So, uh, they're also asking about, because they're up over five hundred thousand, um, and this fundraiser should bring them about forty thousand to sixty thousand. That puts us at the low threshold. And they are very anxious to announce a, uh, a groundbreaking date. And, um, I, I know in the discussions, I believe that you had with their engineer, that they said that they would scale it up or scale it down so that we could make that, make, make it happen at about the five sixty number.
I thought it was five twenty.
Mm.
They do, it was five twenty.
Six hundred, six hundred.
It's, what is it?
Well, we said we would spend up to six hundred. I thought that we were able to, that you guys had talked about the possibility of, of doing, scaling it back to, to.
It, it could be scaled back to whatever your dollar amount, you have that's.
Right. So that's what they're saying. And this, those are, those are dependent on this number that they bring in, uh, for this particular event, as to where that number is, if it's five sixty or five fifty.
Did we decide on the items? I thought that's what we talked about down back in November timeframe. And we looked at the different options possibly, but there wasn't a definite of what the items were gonna be, so.
I think they were gonna leave the zip line out.
No, no.
Right, so, so that, what they're saying is, if we're, if we're there with the numbers and something, you know, with, I, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse. If the number's gonna be whatever it is when they're done this latest fundraiser, if it's five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, they're saying, let's build at five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars with the option to add. And all they wanna do is have the township authorize, uh, that we can pick a, a, a groundbreaking date and a build date.
But let's first also know what we're doing, rather than just saying, okay, we, we're coming up with a date to dig, but we don't even know what we're gonna have. So I think we should.
But I, I understand what you're saying. But they're saying that, that they don't need to know what they have, they just wanna announce.
And dig is more ceremonial too, like people know that we're, we're moving forward.
That it's happening, that it's, it's a groundbreaking, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, shovels in the ground and then they can start preparing, but that gives us.
So, eh, once we dig the, but, once we dig, then we're just, then we'll decide what we're gonna do.
Was there the groundbreaking?
I'm asking, I mean.
We're, let, let's not get, let's look, so they're saying, let's pick a date. And if the date is September twenty eighth.
Right.
Then we have from now till September twenty eighth to see what we're gonna put in, based on the amount of money that is raised by the end of the month.
Okay. Okay, then the only other question I have then is, then I guess we just have to make sure that all the, the foundations and all the different things and stuff can, can still, so, so I guess, I guess it doesn't even matter.
Yeah. So, that's exactly right, so.
So we're gonna make it in the time by, we're gonna, okay, as long as we can do that. You okay with that, Tim?
Six months?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I think at this point, I mean, this whole time, we've just been letting the fundraising efforts and go forward.
Right.
We just need the dollar amount to be able to now take the next step. And I think that this is kind of now cementing is, this is your dollar amount, then we're gonna proceed with, you know, we have concepts of this playground based at certain dollar figures. We generally know what's gonna be, there's more money you have, more playground, less money, less playground. Um, you know, I think we've reached a minimum bar where, you know, you're gonna have enough money to give a reasonable sizable playground out there, that's gonna kind of be true.
With the option to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not, the, the concept of all the equipment that's gonna be going, if the playground, if the budget's over five hundred thousand is not set yet.
As long as you're comfortable with the end year.
But we know what generally it's gonna be and those concepts will be reviewed with this council, so you know what's going out there.
Okay, first one.
And, yeah, I, I mean, but the groundbreaking was like next week, I'd say, eh, eh, eh. But I, I mean, if you're, if you're gonna schedule this groundbreaking out a few months from now.
Right.
And, yeah, we can certainly, this, we can certainly have better, you know, renderings and everything I could have for everybody, ready to, ready actually start, not far, not soon after.
But in her email, didn't she send an email to all of us talking about the groundbreaking? Didn't she want it to announce?
She wanted to be able to announce it at the gala.
At the gala.
Right, which is next week.
And then she thought June? I thought, I read that she thought that the groundbreaking would be in June.
Groundbreaking is what? I mean, the plans have to be in place. It's a ceremonial groundbreaking, so it can be.
Right. But that's what I'm asking, can we?
I think time. But if it's in June, we can figure it out between now and June, between now and the dollar.
I thought that's what she said in her, I'm just saying, that's what she said, very valid. They wanted to announce it at the gala and then maybe start, have the groundbreaking in June.
Right.
But maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Well, we can, we can check that. So what I, what I'd like to say is, oh, you know, make sure that we're okay with announcing the groundbreaking, which this would be their big event for the year. This would be the time to, this is the big show.
Right, that's beautiful.
And then, um, find out, we can find out between now and then. We unfortunately don't have another meeting between now and the event.
When's it then?
Thursday, a week from Thursday. Yeah, a week from.
A week from tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah, whatever, today's Tuesday still, right? Yeah. So it's a week from Thursday. Uh, so if we can, um, do that, and whether it's June or September, it's gonna be shovels in the ground, photo opportunity, you know the drill. And then, when, then we'll announce, you know, they'll do the, the, you guys will do whatever you have to do for the construction and then we'll announce the community bill, what that date will be. So maybe the groundbreaking, the ceremonial groundbreaking will be in June. Uh, she's gonna probably wanna announce a date and we should probably pick a tentative date in June.
But I'm saying June, that might not be right there.
Yeah, so.
If you ever look at the email.
But I, I, I think you guys get a say in this. Regardless of what she says, if you like June or you like July, pick some dates, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think, as you get into July, we get into vacations and people, I think June would be nice, or would still be in.
Like a Saturday in June.
Yeah. No.
Is that enough time? Is that okay for June? Like, I mean, that plans or that doesn't affect?
I don't think it's gonna matter.
Okay.
I mean, I, am I gonna tell you that, you know, by this June date, you know, we have a contractor ready to start the next day? Probably not. But, you know, I think we'll have enough in motion that, you know.
Yeah, ideas.
And, uh, having this park.
Are we, are we looking at a June groundbreaking and a fall build?
Right.
I don't know if it's exactly what it's.
What, um, what is, when's the school get out?
June seventeenth, there's June.
Fifteenth or sixteenth, something like that. It's a Friday is our last day.
Why don't we do it after, at when school gets out, so at least.
Why?
Although maybe not, maybe then they'll get it.
Wouldn't they want it before school lets out?
Well, that's true, before they go away, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's, let's look at maybe, um, uh, the ninth. Maybe the ninth is a Saturday, with, with the second. It's what?
Let's make it the second, June ninth is bad.
June second?
Is that what you think is June?
There you go.
So, anybody else have any conflicts, birthdays, you know, uh, car washes? June second? Yeah, okay. Alright, so let's say June second, what's a good time to do these things, Jen? Ten, eleven?
Sure, ten.
I mean, they still have to agree to the date if you get there.
Well, okay, so.
Well, give them a couple of dates, I mean, the second, ninth is out, go to the next.
Sixteenth or something.
Sixteenth is okay. I do have, uh, it's bad, but I, it's later in the day.
Or you could do it on Sunday.
When's the sixteenth?
Uh, yeah.
And you lose me.
That's what I was saying further out, but I'm. You're not putting sixteen or seventeen back in the seconds or something.
Yeah.
Sixteenth, yes.
Um, so, so, uh, that's a good point, Jerry. When, when does baseball start? Will there be games on the Saturday morning?
That's true, exactly, the conflict.
Do we, do we wanna maybe do this not on a Saturday?
Do you have to pick the date to make?
No, but we don't have another meeting.
Did they, did they request a Saturday?
No, can we just defer?
Then do they play Saturdays and Sundays?
Can, can we just say that, that we'll, we'll approve a date and we'll talk to them, see what's good for them, we'll figure it out. We can do that. Is that allowed to be done, uh, the, the stinking date?
If, 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 I mean, if council directs you to, to negotiate the date.
Alright, so I'll negotiate the date, I'll confirm with everybody at the table, uh, and with them to make sure that it's all good and we'll announce.
Yeah, figure out that, that the, the Jesus of, alright, very good.
Find out too, it might be, it might not be a conflict with the baseball, with baseball, yeah, it's early enough in June.
Yeah, we'll let AA know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And sometimes they can reschedule their games later, it's probably gonna be an hour, right? Ten to eleven?
Yeah.
So they can maybe schedule their games.
Or maybe we could do it.
If they know ahead in time.
Early, yeah, that's true.
So.
You're not playing any games, we're gonna have baseball.
Yeah, yeah, they can play all they want. So we're okay, you're okay with me, uh, working out the date with, with Jake's Place? Okay. And the, uh, uh, second part of, uh, my request or my report is that, um, you know, I, I, I got, I got some calls and, uh, about snow and they, you know, I got a lot of good calls about snow, but I got a couple, oh, you know, what, they didn't do a good job here. And they showed me pictures and it was all, it was all where cars were. So the cars were on the street and people don't know that you're supposed to take your car off the street, apparently, uh, even though they're thirty, forty year residents. Uh, so maybe we need to, we need to do some sort of, uh, an alert, I don't know what we do, NICSIL, police, something, some outbound thing that says, take your cars off the street. Is, uh, is, is it my, is my understanding, I think, that you could actually put your car on your lawn on the snow?
You can't.
A lot of these people put their cars out in the street and Jerry will tell you to block the driveway so they don't get plowed in. So I'm gonna tell you, the majority of them know there's a nor'easter that you're getting about a foot and a half of snow.
Yeah.
Most of them know they should probably pull it in the driveway, so I would say the majority of them that do have it out on the street, a lot of them are doing it early.
Well, I saw a lot of, I don't know, it was Westover or.
And we usually do tell them, we usually do tell them to pull it in.
So, well, who tells? I don't, I didn't see anything. How do we tell them?
We're done, next we'll be, I mean, there's, there's, there's no difference between if we do it and we don't, but if they wanna do it, we certainly.
Well, at least we can point to something and say, you know, set out.
And you have done it, so.
I even made remarks at the last work session for all the people who were watching it.
Oh, uh, and the.
But we didn't make calls, I remember even telling, back when I, I would have an ally fingers, where we did a call after people, let them know when there was storm.
Okay, so I, I wanna also make, um, a notice, I think it would be appropriate, uh, as this was a storm situation, to tell folks about the branch pickup has started. Please put all storm related branches out now, tomorrow. Um, and I did not know about the four to five hours to get through the town, that makes tremendous sense to just, don't do it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, way, way to put something on the work, not that people are gonna do it, but the best thing for them to do is to shovel to about three feet from the street and stop there until
Right.
these guys are done, cause you're gonna get the snow down, a cloud in. And when you have a, and, and, I mean, I heard people complaining about, well, they became boulders. When you have heavy wet snow, number one, they have to move fast enough to move the snow, so.
Right.
You're gonna hear, if they do twenty-five, you're gonna end up racing through the streets. If you do fifteen, they're not gonna be able to move a truck, they're not gonna be able to move the snow. And it is gonna turn to boulders, and it did.
Right. And, and I.
It's heavy as slush.
And, and the, and people were discussing that, you know, well, they didn't plow to the curb like they usually do. And I'm glad you didn't, because I would not have been able to move those, the big boulders that were at, along the curb, rather than up on the sidewalk.
They would've been physically attacked if they had.
Yeah.
Right, if they had done it to the curb.
Right.
Because, because, you know, I've been in a truck when, when we were.
Well, I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna tell you, they do, I've seen where they, you did in Summer Hill to the curb, and I'm gonna tell you, if they can get to the curb, they, you do do it to, to the curb. But if they can't, they can, unfortunately, it's blocked.
Well, thank God they didn't on, on the streets surrounding my neighborhood. Because it was, it was fine. And it, and it melted and there's, you know, something, it was a bit of an easy snow, snowman building, you had the first piece already in place. Alright, so that's on my report. Can we have anything for us?
Nope. Nope.
Okay. So, uh, uh, do you have a motion to go to public?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we're in public, we can do as we normally do, we have three folks, we'll go around the room, we'll start with Tim, anything?
Do we? Another thing?
Alright. Motion to come out of public?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, so we're, we're, uh, do you have a motion to go into executive session?
Make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we're in executive session, we have a ticket, two minutes.